All right, so look at that, I woke everybody up. I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order. Roll call taker, please, call the roll.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I declare a quorum. Approval of the minutes of the meeting, May twenty-second, twenty-fourteen.
I make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, that passes. Report and recommendation purchase of two F-350 pickup trucks for the Public Works Department.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any questions? You want to make a roll call on it? Nope, Pete?
I said one question. It talks about snow, are we putting plows onto these trucks?
Yes, sir, we are putting plows on both these trucks. Both of these trucks will be able to be utilized as, um, snow fighting pieces of equipment for us.
Go ahead, Pete.
And will we actually use them for snow fighting? We're not just buying plows to have them sit around?
Well, it's an interesting question, Alderman Jacob. Um, the, um, these trucks are used, used in the water, the utilities division and in the wastewater division. When we have large snow events, we pull, um, resources from anywhere we can get. So they will be used in large, um, operations as well as to, um, clear out, um, lift stations, uh, pump stations. So they may not be used as main line, um, trucks, but they will be used for, uh, uh, snow operations. We're not just buying plows, just to buy plows.
Go ahead, Pete.
Finally, is that, the price include the plows or no?
Yes, sir. The total, that's the total price for everything.
Thanks.
Okay. Eugene?
Do we, in that motion, did we, uh, say not to exceed dollar amount, final dollar amount for this?
We did not. But we can add that if you would.
Well, I think that needs to be added. And then I have, uh, one follow-up question.
Go ahead, Eugene.
Obviously, these are coming on under budget, so I have no problem proving this, but I just don't like when we, someone makes a comment that we are, if we pass a deficit budget, we could pass a deficit budget, uh, when we did budget time. Right now, it's proven fact that it is not a deficit budget, whatever we pass here. Because this is a savings already. So, I'm just saying.
Yeah, mark my words, I'm sure there'll be something that comes over budget, so we probably won't be as happy that night.
Okay, so we're gonna change the not to exceed sixty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Who made that motion? Was it you?
I made the motion, yeah.
Is that okay with you?
I accept that, yes, absolutely.
And the second?
I sec, I accept that, too.
You accept that, and Eugene, you?
You need to also add the, uh, three thousand dollars additional, right?
Six thousand.
Six thousand? For the radio equipment?
Three thousand per truck, correct?
We should be able to do it for three thousand for total.
So we're gonna change that again to sixty-nine thousand?
Sixty-nine, one twenty-three.
One twenty-three. And that's okay with the motioner?
Right, I'll change the motion to not exceed sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars.
And then, Tony?
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. And we have report and recommendation on purchase of two F-550s with dump bodies. And I think we should probably make that motion, is that not to exceed, um, one hundred and forty-four thousand and twelve dollars? Okay?
Second, their motion.
Okay. Uh, any questions? Roll call?
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. Um, roll call taker, you want to, uh, make a note that, uh, Roy Wesley, thank you. Uh, report and recommendation installation of Prospect Avenue speed bumps. Go ahead, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt, your.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Um, back in May of two thousand and twelve, uh, city issued a, or, uh, petition was delivered to the city requesting speed bumps, speed humps, bumps, some sort of speed, uh, slowing down devices upon Prospect Avenue, uh, between George and Potter. That original report was, or, survey was sent out in two thousand and twelve. Uh, eighty-one percent of the residents that returned response were in favor of those. Temporarily were put out, temporarily were then removed, and then this spring, we, um, sent it back out, uh, where sixteen people said yes and thirty-nine, few people said no, which made only twenty-nine percent of the people in favor of the project now. So I guess, right now, Public Works Department and the Police Department is looking for, um, a, I don't know, final solution to this, to this issue on whether or not that we install permanent speed bumps along Prospect Avenue between George and Potter. And at this time, I guess I would ask the, uh, the council for a recommendation on what they would like to do.
I have a few questions, Christine.
Thank you. Uh, it, just for added information, that when we did the questionnaire and, and the residents were going around, um, in two thousand and twelve, they were also asking if, um, they had no parking on one side of the street. And there was an overwhelming majority of people that said yes, and that also agreed to not park on the other side of the street. So we did implement that, and it has been successful. I haven't received any complaints, only thank yous, and cars can pass much eas, easier. So, I believe that we have made a big stride in this area, and that there is an overwhelming not in favor of having the speed bumps, uh, permanently. So I would support not having the speed bumps.
Good, Art?
Yeah, I'll make a motion not to install the speed bumps.
I would second their motion.
Mayor, did you have a question?
Yeah, actually, I did. Matt, over here, it says residents that utilize Prospect but don't live there. What does that mean? People from three blocks away to?
No, we, um, we expanded the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. We expanded the, um, the area that we, um, surveyed. Originally, the survey was just, um, along the people that fronted Prospect Avenue. Um, and what we did was, we expanded it a little bit to the people that lived in, um, Georgetown Square.
Oh, in the townhomes.
In the townhomes, a little bit.
Across the street.
Yeah, across the street. We, uh, we went out and we got some different addresses of people, not just front those, but that live, you know, a couple houses back on each side and down the street a little bit. So we kind of expanded the, expanded the, uh, the, uh, base.
Okay, uh, any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
One.
Right. And I have a report and recommendation, award contract to Swallow Construction Corporation for the Ward Two Capital Improvement Project Phase One, and the not to exceed amount of two million, one hundred and two thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? No? Uh, roll call, please?
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
No.
And that passes. A report and recommendation Woodside Subdivision Drainage Improvements. Yeah, I'd like to turn that over to, uh, Matt.
Tonight, we have a presentation from Mr. Fundrich with, um, Robertson Engineering, and he's going to just go over a little bit about what's happening, um, and the steps up into, uh, us going out to a bid for contractor, at the Woodside Subdivision Drainage Project.
Thanks, Matt, good evening, everybody. Um, we just wanted to give a quick, uh, overview, so everyone had an understanding of what the scope of work was gonna be out here. Woodside Subdivision, it was built about twenty-five years ago, and it's, it's really at the low end of about a three-hundred acre area that ultimately drains this way. Uh, Woodside, uh, is about a ten, a little more than ten percent of that area, thirty-five acres. And so there's a fair amount of flow that comes through, and, and where this whole area comes through with, uh, drainage, there's these ponds that, that work through and then make their way under eighty-three. There are triple bypass culverts here, and we did verify, uh, that the problems that you see up here are really not related to these triple culverts. They are sized appropriately under the state road. There is a bit of a bottleneck on the east side of eighty-three that is really beyond our scope, and it's beyond, uh, the city limits, so we're not gonna pay too much attention to it in terms of trying to solve that. But, um, that forty-eight inch restrictor is something that in the very large events does cause certain backups through the system that, uh, are gonna be well, well beyond the scope of, of this project. Uh, the other thing that we noticed is, we did the survey out there, so everyone is aware, you've got some really flat streets out here. There's not a real good crown to the streets, so the water has a tough time even getting to the curbs. Uh, and in a couple of the streets, particularly on Spruce and on Woodside, even the, the, along the profiles of the streets, they're really a lot flatter than, than maybe would be ideal by, by today's design standards. So, you know, that, that's ultimately what we had to work with in terms of trying to find the best solutions for it. We, we went ahead and looked at the old subdivision plans, and on the north pond, um, you'll see this area that's in red, and that, that's a pretty important, right in the center of the page there where it says overlay and flow path. It's a pretty important thing, uh, when we get into the larger events, and same with the other pond, there's another one of these, uh, these paths right in here. A lot of time, you know, most of the time when subdivisions are built, you've got your ten-year flows that you try to convey, uh, in the storm sewer pipes themselves. For the larger flows, it, it's almost always designed to be going over land, and that's why these overland paths are critical. What we found is that the pond volumes, you really don't have any problems there, they, they seem very reasonable. Uh, we don't, we do know that there's been street flooding out there, uh, but there haven't been any basement backups reported that, that staff was aware of when we met with them. I mentioned about these flat profiles, as well as, some of these overland flow paths have some challenges. You can see here, it may not be able to see it real clearly, but this is one of those paths where there's a, a lift station there, there's a whole bunch of foliage there. That does tend to block some water, uh, that, that would, that was really designed to go through that area. A couple of years ago, the, the city had done a, a citywide drainage study, and this was one of the areas that was looked at, um, by Baxter and Woodman, and they had recommendations for, uh, solving this ten-year event simply by, by putting a, a couple extra storm sewers up here, basically removing some of the smaller pipes and replacing them with larger pipes. For the hundred-year event, that, they expanded that scope to pretty much do the same thing, removing existing pipes, replacing them with larger pipes, along with additional inlets. We, we looked at that, and as, as we got into the, doing the design for what we're moving with, uh, here, the city had, had decided that we wanted to stay within that scope of the ten-year. Baxter had looked at a, a ten-year bud, for the, solving the ten-year event problem, about a two-hundred thousand dollar project. Their estimate for the hundred-year was more like nine-hundred thousand, so we're really trying to stay within the confines of that, of that ten-year solution. The one thing we did do, though, is, what we're recommending is that instead of removing the existing pipes and replacing them with a larger one, the old, the existing pipes are only about twenty years old. There's really no reason to get rid of them, keep them there, but supplement that capacity with a new storm sewer that we're envisioning coming down the center of the street, so that we're not disrupting, uh, trees and things along those lines in the parkways, along with all the other utilities. Uh, we're gonna be adding about a dozen inlets up here on Crestwood and Spruce to get that done. And then on the, in the other area along Woodside Drive, again, adding about seven inlets and a little bit of storm sewer to do the same thing. Mayor?
You're gonna go to your chairman first?
Right, you said, yes. Yeah, no problem. When you say going down the center of the, the street.
Mm-hmm.
Because the street is flat right now, but when the city goes to redo these streets, if we put a crown on them, is, is it gonna still work?
Yes, because the, the, the main sewer will be in the center of the street, but there will be inlets at the curbs that'll be connected to that main sewer.
Okay.
Eugene?
Next year's paving, too.
So my question here, if we move forward this project, are we going, are we going to say these streets are going to be moved up quicker to be reconstructed? I mean, that's my concern right now.
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, these streets are scheduled for reconstruction next year. That's why we're trying to get this project in this year. So, resurfaced.
Grind, resurface.
Grinding, yeah, grind and resurface. And that's, and that's what's, that's what's viable to this, because once they go in and cut down the middle of the street, they put the sanitary, or they put the storm sewers in there, and then we'll come through and grind and put the new surface in next year. So that's, I mean, this, that's done this way for a reason. You'd come and do all the utility work and then come through and put the new road surface in on top of it.
Can I just, do a follow-up? Where, where did? Why, who made the determination Woodside is definitely scheduled for next, next year's road project? Did I miss any CIP or?
No, uh, in the past couple of years, I think probably about two years ago, maybe even three years ago, we did the streets efficiency study. We're due for another streets efficiency study next year. So these streets were in the streets efficiency study ranked numerically. Coinciding with that, we had this area in our stormwater master plan. So throughout the course of the previous couple CIPs, we've gotta link our streets efficiency study, and when that street was programmed in, together with our stormwater master plan. So, since the streets were programmed in, this isn't necessarily the worst flooding area. I'm sure that, you know, Ward Three or Ward Four or whatever has bigger problems than some street flooding. However, a driving factor was the numeric value of the street resurfacing program. And this being on the list anyway, for a low amount of money, that's why this was programmed in about two years ago to be done this year.
Go ahead, Roy.
Jeff, are you telling me Woodside Street came in worse than Forest Preserve Drive?
Go ahead, Jeff.
I'm telling you, we did a streets efficiency study two or three years ago, and this was programmed in not once, not twice, but three times by you guys yourselves for this year.
The question was.
Dad, Roy.
The question was, did the Woodside come in in the condition worse than Forest Preserve Drive?
Jeff?
Don't beat around it.
I'm not gonna beat around it, I don't know the answer to that, I don't have the study in front of me. All I know is, we've looked at the study, you've looked at the study, and for the past three years, nobody's said anything, and this has been programmed to do.
Okay, uh, Mayor?
My, and I don't know what, what the streets rated at, but my guess is gonna be that these streets came in over, what was it? What was the number, seventy-five, where we do resurfacing? Once they get to seventy or less, then they go move to full reconstruction, they can't resurface. And I'm sure if we look at the numbers, I know Alderman Wesley went to get them, I think he might have them in his car. You know, I, I'm, because I remember those conversations, and it's like, oh, wait a minute, that street is worse. And at the time, uh, the gentleman who was in charge and the engineer said, listen, the streets, it, once it goes under seventy, well, I think we had a street at forty, and we're like, well, we'll put that into the plan to get it done, I think, two years down the road, so we're not gonna resurface that one. And I think that's what's probably happening here, if that's the way it was put into the plan, but there's the plan right now, we'll get the numbers. But I'm sure that one's gonna be under seventy, and this one's gonna be over seventy, or seventy-five, whatever that cutoff was, I don't remember exactly.
Okay, Art?
Yeah, Jeff, part of the reason that we do that study every, whatever, three, five years is because the, it's kind of a fluid moving target. A street that did meet the grade, two years later could be the worst street in the city. So, I think that's what Alderman Roy Wesley's bringing up, is that street he mentioned is deteriorating faster. But, that being said, is this gonna be done before we do the new study? I think that's the concern, that there's a lot of other streets that, uh, need some work.
Gotcha.
This is programmed for next year to be done, and next year is also when we do the new study. So it'll be done before the new study.
You wanna proceed with your, uh, presentation? Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, my, my guess is, our goal is to keep streets resurfaced, to improve them. Otherwise, once they fall below that seventy, then we'd have to do the full reconstruction, gonna cost us more, like, like we just did, uh, the streets past few years. We shouldn't have to touch them for another fifteen years, but if we wait twenty-five years or longer, then we might be right back at full reconstruction. I think that's why we started the resurfacing, that's why the streets efficiency study, uh, it's not an exact science, but that's why I think we do it every three years, correct? And I, and right, Forest Preserve is pretty chopped up. Gene, you have the numbers, I know you're looking for.
I, I'm looking at.
Okay, in the meantime, we'll proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, what we have for this storm sewer work, and, and just so everyone is clear, after these storm sewers would be built, the pavement would be patched, um, so if they get resurfaced next year, whenever you're there would, they, they would have a new patch, at least where these, where these sewer pipes are. And we're estimating the cost for this about two-hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, just so that, uh, everyone's aware of that. There's one other pipe that was recommended in the original study at the far south end of the Spruce Road cul-de-sac. That was part of the hundred-year event solution, so we're not including that as part of this scope of work. It may just be something that the city would want to evaluate, at whichever time you decide to do the, the street. And if you want to put that pipe in then, maybe it makes sense, maybe it, it won't be worth the money, that'll be a different, different analysis. So in terms of our schedule, uh, we're on line to, uh, complete the plans and specs here this month, and be able to advertise for bids before the end of the month. We're, we're targeting a bid date of July eighth, uh, which is a Tuesday before your committee meeting on the tenth. We wanted to make sure that the, the council was aware, because of the, the type, the timeframe is tight. We know that there's gonna be a, a council meeting in early August that is gonna be canceled due to, to Prairie Fest. So we wanted to make sure that we had this thing really in, in place, so that we can make sure construction in August and September, we know it's a priority to get it done this year. So we will get the bids, uh, we'll have them, uh, to present on, at the committee meeting of July tenth, and then for, uh, full council action on, on the seventeenth of July, uh, with construction then, uh, you know, in the, in the late summer, early fall. So that's, uh, basically where we stand, and if there's any other questions, we'll be happy to entertain them.
Tony?
Those pipes, you say you're replacing the pipes, how, how wide are those pipes?
Well, we're, we're, actually, we're gonna leave the existing pipes, and we're gonna be adding new pipes to supplement the ones that are there. Uh, and they vary based on where you are in the system, but most of them are between twelve inches and eighteen-inch diameter.
Isn't there a thirty-inch?
Uh, there's not, there's a thirty-inch planned for the hundred-year capacity from that original storm event, but we're staying with, you know, shooting to solve that ten-year capacity at this point, uh, mostly due to cost.
Matt?
Just so everybody's aware, we're not asking for any, um, action from the, uh, committee tonight. No motions or anything need to be done, this was more just an informational, um, presentation, and, uh, we'll, when we come back on July tenth is when we're gonna need that next motion, just so everybody's aware of that.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Go ahead, Mayor.
Matt, a couple of the Aldermen weren't on the council last time that streets efficiency study, uh, maybe if you wanna email it out, so they have it.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Or Eugene can make some copies and just give it to them tonight.
Either, either way, I mean.
Okay, uh, Roy?
Jeff. I understand what you're saying about the study and stuff, but, you know, that Forest Preserve Drive is deteriorating very quickly. I'd like to see if we can move that up sooner than later, if there's any money left over from the, uh...
We just saved a hundred and some thousand.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Construct, from this year's construction.
Well, we just came under bid on the one project. Depending on where they said the street is, I mean, if the street's at sixty, they're gonna recommend a full reconstruct. They're not gonna want us to do a resurface. I mean, we could, we've done that in the past, but that's, two, three years later, we go in and rip it out, and we're throwing the money away. I, I don't have a problem with, we just saved over a hundred thousand. I, I don't think it'll cost more than a hundred thousand to resurface Forest Preserve if we wanted to add it on, but it really comes down to the numbers.
Okay? Any further questions? Eugene? Okay. Oh, no, go, go.
Here's, here's the thing, I, I'll be more than happy to, uh, share this with you guys. But two thousand and eleven, two thousand and eleven, in that area, we spent almost, over two hundred thousand dollars to resurface. Huh? Crestwood, Crestwood Road.
Crestwood.
Crestwood. Is that in, that's in Woodside, I mean, this is the Woodside subdivision.
Was, was that jobs completed, or was that estimates of how much it's gonna cost to do the job back in two thousand and eleven when they said, when the streets efficiency study was developed?
In two thousand and fourteen, it was resurfaced.
That's this year.
Well, it wasn't.
Oh, two thousand and fourteen, so the problem is, two thousand and eleven was a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
That's, that, I'm pretty sure that's probably just the engineering estimate on what it would cost if we do that road. I've been down in that area, and there's not a whole lot of new road down there.
And, and, and this free, and all that street, I will tell you, the number was fifty-seven. But, here's, here's Aspen Road at forty-nine. Here's Maple Avenue at forty-nine. Here's Mill Road at twenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mayor.
And all those roads are, um, also on the plan for recon. There's a difference between, uh, rest, or, um, removal and replacement of the top, uh, grinding and resurfacing versus reconstruction, total reconstruction. So, usually what you'd like to do is do a, um, a grind and overlay of a, of a road before it gets too bad, that turns into a mill road. Once it turns into a mill road, um, or something that's in the thirties or something, then it's a total reconstruction. That, that takes, you know, basically, it takes a number times ten of, uh, just a grind and overlay. So what you'd like to do is try to get at least two surfaces out of a base before you go in there and rip the whole thing up and start over.
How long does a surface, I'm sorry, how long does a surface usage last?
On average, twelve to fifteen years.
Okay, oh, Eugene, go ahead.
Is Mill Road set for reconstruction this year? Total reconstruction?
No, Mill, Mill Road is set for, I believe, reconstruction in seventeen, along with the, along with Water Main restoration, or Water Main, um, replacement in sixteen.
So.
Excuse me, if I may, Chairman, point of order, we are getting off topic of the Woodside Subdivision Drainage Improvements. We're here to look at a plan. So if, if we do wanna talk about reordering the roads, let, let, let's do that at our next Public Works, uh, committee, and, and I'd be happy to discuss that and look at the plan, and we'll, and we'll all have it in front of us, the streets efficiency, but we are getting off topic.
Okay, Matt, if you can, uh, maybe meet with, uh, Eugene Wesley, and, um, maybe go over some of his concerns.
Point, point of order here, the point is, we're making, trying to make a decision if we're moving forward this study. Okay, so this falls under.
So what you're asking is, is are there streets that should be ahead of these?
That may have flooding issues before this subdivision, is what I would say.
Yeah, no, I, I get what you're saying.
Go ahead, Jeff.
There's no vote.
You already made that decision, you signed Robertson on to do the engineering for the project. You made that decision months ago and budgeted for it years ago. As far as the other streets, yeah, that's another.
Not to move forward with it. Not construct.
Well, budget, you budgeted for it.
Because we've already, are doing the engineering for this, correct? Right, in April, we decided this, uh, okay. Okay? All right, um, items to be considered at future, oh, go ahead, Roy.
Well, go ahead, I'll put it under that.
Items to be considered at future meetings. Roy?
The discussion that Eugene was having with Jeff, we're bringing it up to the whole table.
Go ahead.
What exactly is the item at the future meeting? To go out and do another streets efficiency study now, when it's budgeted for next year? Is that the discussion? Or what are we discussing?
Go ahead, Mayor.
I think we should just take a look at what the streets are in this streets efficiency study we have now. Because, I'll be honest with you, with the two winters we've just had, I know there's been some major changes, and that's why I think we kept it to three years. I'd like to see all the numbers, I, I don't recall every street in every city what number it is, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that those streets that we're talking about, you just heard some forties and thirties, they're not on the schedule to be done right now. Actually, we, we've moved some streets that were unfunded ahead of those.
Right.
You know, so, again, though, let's look at the numbers, and we'll have a little discussion how we wanna go forward, but the understanding, and I, I forget who gave, I, I believe it was one of the engineers that explained the roads, I think it was, I don't know if it was seventy or seventy-five. You know, so, again, though, let's look at the numbers and we'll have a little discussion how we wanna go forward, but, the understanding, and I, I forget who gave, I, I believe it was one of the engineers, that explained the roads, I think it was, I don't know if it was seventy or seventy-five percent, we resurf- we wanna, we don't wanna get to seventy percent, we wanna resurface, and I think at the time we were told, every time we do a full reconstruction, because the, the water mains and whatnot that go in should last forty-five to fifty years, we should get three res- should be resurfaced twice before, so it's the first coat, then the resurface, and another resurface, that'll be like forty-five years, and at that time, we might have to do another set of water mains. So we should kinda maybe get that explanation in, so it's the same, we're all on the same page.
Art?
Yeah, I was gonna say something similar, I mean, we already have the strategic plan, we did the budget, all the things are really in the works, I think the big thing here would be to take the money that we're saving on the project to do some interim or supplemental work to those streets that, you know, Alderman Roy Wesley brought up Forest Preserve, uh, and I'm sure there's some others, that we can move them up, instead of throwing all the cards up in the air and reshuffling the deck, I mean, we already have things in the work and, and, and moving, just see what we can do to add a few more, and maybe reassess some of the streets in the future.
Gotcha.
I just wanna be clear that we've given you guys what you want, so you want us to maybe go, look at the study, come back with some recommendations on things that maybe we can be more proactive before the next study, and then discuss it at the committee, that's what we want?
Yeah, is that agreed?
Yeah, agreed.
Okay.
It might even say that we might have to do the study earlier, who knows? Let's talk about it.
Sure, Mayor?
Yeah, basically, I just wanna make sure that, cause it was a bad practice, we used to Band-Aid, you know, the hundred, hundred thousand dollar Band-Aids, and then we go back two years later, rip out the Band-Aid, basically the hundred thousand went into the garbage, so, I mean, if, if we gotta move streets up, like Forest Preserve or whatever, so be it, but, I just wanna make sure we're careful that we're, we don't go back to, revert to some of the old philosophies.
Okay, anything else, uh, to be considered at future meetings? No, okay, I'd like to, uh, make, oh, go ahead, Jeff.
Just one thing, we wanna make sure we're organized with this, and we don't wanna, you know, rush it, um, I don't know if we'll have it in time for the next committee, but the summer, obviously, we'll, we'll bring it, so, I don't know if it's the next committee or not.
Okay, all right, fair enough, thank you. Like to make a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, meeting adjourned.